Good evening, Dr. Kline, Dr. Johns, members of the Board of Education and the Christman community. Thank you for joining us tonight as we celebrate the learning at Christman. Our mission statement says that we strive to prepare students for their future in an ever-changing world. The goal of that statement was evident tonight as Christman students, staff, and parents worked closely together to create an evening showcasing the activities and learning that occurs at Christman each day. It is part of our mission to prepare students to become confident and creative citizens in an ever-changing world. Please join me as I applaud the efforts of everyone in the Christman learning community who helped put tonight's events together. In choosing our theme, "I Learn," we focused on learning with the integration of technology and higher-order thinking skills. To expand on the classroom presentations tonight, here are some ways that these cognitively complex skills will help students to meet college and career readiness standards. I choose, when students have the opportunity to personalize their learning and choose learning paths, they are reflecting and developing metacognition, the ability to think about how they learn. I evaluate, students demonstrate higher-order thinking when they evaluate their own learning with goal-setting and progress monitoring. I create, lessons that involve higher-order thinking require students to create new solutions to complex problems as students reflect and apply what has been learned. I explore, teachers recognize that students need to explore content in order to make connections and interpret the world around them. I read, students must read critically from reliable sources and use the information appropriately as they draw conclusions. I communicate, in today's hyper-connected world, students must communicate using diverse communication methods for a variety of purposes for different audiences. I engage, engaged learners take risks and are not afraid to try something new. They know that hard work and effort are connected to achievement. Last, I discover, students generate and formulate hypotheses to discover new real-world applications. College-bound students and those beginning to enter the workforce will need these essential skills. How do we help students develop these skills and process new content? We begin with the belief that all students can achieve. At Christman, we have high expectations for our students with personalized learning, student goal-setting, and student-centered classrooms. In Utica Community Schools, we implement a world-class curriculum with research-based instructional strategies. As part of our school improvement process, we communicate learning objectives with students and examine evidences of student learning to inform our instruction. Evidences of student learning come from student work, student performance tasks, and classroom assessments. Using formative assessment to inform our instruction and personalize learning is at the heart of our teachers' everyday work. I hope you notice some of the evidences of learning tonight in the classrooms, such as the motivational progress monitoring folders, learning logs, iMovies, students recording data, responding to texts, and presenting their learning. Some of our summative and formative district assessments come from the nationally-normed Northwest Evaluation Association, NWEA assessments. Students in grades K through 6 take the NWEA assessments three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring. Let's look at some of our NWEA data. In grades K through 6, reading and math, our spring 2014 RIT norm averages are above the average range of 41% to 60% in all grades. In grades 3 through 6, language and science, our spring 2014 RIT norm averages are above the average range of 41% to 60% in all grades. Let's look at some other ways that we use student data. The Dream Box Dashboard provides a variety of reports for teachers to monitor student progress. An example of a Dream Box report is the Classroom Usage Report. Teachers can monitor time on task as well as the number of lessons and units that students complete. Another Dream Box report is the Student Progress Report by Standard Report. Teachers can monitor what standards students tested out of, mastered, and are working on at this time. In 2007, Christman was recognized as a Blue Ribbon exemplary school. To be eligible, schools must complete a comprehensive report of key criteria for school effectiveness that serves as the basis for an extensive assessment of the building and programs. We are very proud to be a Michigan Blue Ribbon School as we continue to demonstrate a strong commitment to educational excellence for all our students. State assessment data continues to show that Christman Elementary ranks above state and district averages when we measure achievement on our state assessments. On the top-to-bottom list, part of Michigan's school accountability system, our hard work has paid off. We were ranked in the 85th percentile of Michigan schools for the 2013-14 school year. To extend learning beyond the Christman walls, Christman offers extracurricular opportunities for students, including those listed on this slide. We offer after-school enrichment programs that run a multitude of classes for all ages and interests. I hope you had an opportunity to visit students that are so proud of their clubs and teams. Our parents go above and beyond to support learning at Christman. They watch over students during lunch, volunteer in the classrooms, run copies each day, and raise funds to purchase additional materials and technology, among other things. Our parent-teacher conference attendance rate sits between 98% to 100% each and every year because of the dedication of our parents to their child's education. Our PTA provides activities and events throughout the year, both during school hours and on family-friendly nights. In fact, we just held our first evening Monster Bash with costumes, a DJ, and lots of family fun activities for everyone. The turnout was great, and the students had a great time connecting with their friends. Christman is truly a caring place to learn in partnership with the parents in the community with a positive and productive learning environment. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our student presentation of a Today Show skit that takes place in the future. The skit will reveal how students in the future will utilize the higher-order thinking skills of today as they flashback from the year 2030 to 2014.
Good evening. I learn, taking a look back to 2014, how yesterday's learners at Christman Elementary have become today's leaders.
Students choosing new opportunities, engaging and communicating, discovering and creating, and making connections to evaluate personal learning. Today is Monday, October 27, 2030. This is Today's Learners, Future Leaders with Natalie Holtz, Brenner Smith, Anna Hilliard, and Alex Warner, live from the board meeting at Christman Elementary in Shelby Township.
Good evening. I'm Anna Hilliard.
I'm Alex Warner, along with Brenner Smith and Natalie Holtz.
Tonight, we are looking back at Christman Elementary from 2030 to 2014.
I can't believe we are looking back already.
I know it seems like yesterday you were learning in those classrooms.
Well, it is evident that we have aged so gracefully and have achieved so much since your years here at Christman Elementary.
I agree, Alex, and tonight we'll be celebrating our learning.
And how our learning has helped us to become future leaders.
Let's take a look back.
Being a mechanic makes me think back to my virtual labs in Discovery Ed. I learned how to problem-solve when I need to repair vehicles.
Being a physical therapist has allowed me to discover that I learned in 6th grade. I can discover the area that my patients need the most support.
Boy, they've come a long way since 2014.
Wow, mechanical environmental leaders.
Well, Natalie, they were a green school back then.
In 3rd grade, I read a variety of content, helped me become an author. When I create books, I read a variety of genres.
Reading for me means helped me achieve my goal of becoming an actor. I understand and comprehend what I read.
You know, Alex, they always had a strong reading program.
I agree, Brenner, along with lots of technology support, like rascals and interactive whiteboards.
When I was in 1st grade, I studied how to learn, and it helped me become a better teacher. Now I can assess the students I teach.
The individualized programs such as eSpark really help to meet the needs of all learners.
When I was in 5th grade, I engaged in my learning. Now I'm a pilot in the Air Force, and I use those skills to read the instruments as I fly my planes.
Being an engaged learner has helped me develop my skills as a meteorologist. I can follow weather patterns as I report the weather.
Wow, Discovery Science textbooks online. They were having their time way back in 2014.
Our chief meteorologist from today's learners, future leaders, is also a Christman alum.
2nd grade at Christman let me create using technology, and I became an architect. I'm able to use technology to help me erect buildings.
During my 2nd grade year at Christman, I used creativity and learning, and it assisted me in becoming a successful hairstylist. Learning through creativity helps me make my clients satisfied.
The students are very innovative and learn how to create using 21st-century technology.
As a fourth grade in Christman Elementary, I communicate throughout my learning, and I am able to become a doctor.
I am a police officer, and I communicate daily. I learned these skills at Christman. When I'm on the job, I communicate ways to keep our community safe.
Christman students really learn a variety of communication skills. Do you think, Brenner?
And Natalie, let me add, they become some of the area's finest doctors and police officers.
When I was in kindergarten, I made choices, and it helped me choose to be a firefighter. I chose the best way to help my community.
Dream Box learning really helps students achieve their personal math goals.
I don't know about you guys, but I really enjoyed looking back at the learning that took place at Christman.
They definitely produce successful leaders.
The foundation that they built and rigorous curriculum standards help guide their way.
We hope you enjoyed our special edition of Today's Learners, Future Leaders, Looking Back at Christman. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Today's Learners, Future Leaders, for that fantastic glimpse into the future. Thank you. Wonderful job, boys and girls. As you could see from that presentation, students of today must develop the ability to engage, communicate, and evaluate to be successful in college and future careers. At this time, I would like to introduce our special guest speakers that will be sharing their reflections as former students at Christman. Mr. Anthony Giannetti attended Christman and continued through Utica Community Schools, and he is currently attending Michigan State University. He is excited to share with you his flashback from former days at Christman, Mr. Anthony Giannetti.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anthony Giannetti. I'm a former Christman student and Eisenhower graduate. I'm currently a senior in the James Madison College at Michigan State University studying international relations and political economics. Throughout my time at Michigan State, I've had many experiences that have helped shape me into the leader I am today. Starting my freshman year, I began working at the Michigan House of Representatives for the majority whip Peter Lund as a non-paid legislative intern. I have continued to work for Representative Lund throughout my time here at MSU, and have worked my way up to a part-time paid legislative aide. I have also worked in Washington DC over the past two summers. Two summers ago, I worked directly for Congresswoman Candace Miller, and this past summer, I worked for the committee that she chairs on House Administration for six weeks. I then worked in the Speaker of the House, John Boehner's office, for the last two months of the summer. I believe much of the success I have had thus far in my life is largely due to the early years at Christman Elementary School and Utica Community Schools. From an early age, I was challenged in many different ways. A few of the teachers stand out. Mr. Mike Sikorski was my 3rd grade teacher. He had a reading contest for students where the more you read, the more points you accumulated, which resulted in being awarded military ranks. I became a five-star general twice. This incentive was great for me as a student, and I know it was the same for hundreds of his students through the years. This program is a fun, exciting way to get young 3rd graders to keep on reading and just do it every day. If it were not for programs like this, I would not be as good as writer or reader as I am today. Mr. Sikorski was also my leader for Math Olympiad and the Sweeps Program at Christman Elementary. Both of these programs challenged me in ways that I had not yet ever been challenged and encouraged me to think in new and creative ways. My 5th grade teacher, Ms. Sherry Koznowski, continued this program, thus encouraging the foundation and challenging me on a daily basis. Ms. Courtney Connolly was my 6th grade teacher. She was not only a great teacher and preparing me for junior high school and beyond, but she was instrumental in making sure her students were educated in technology. We were given many PowerPoint and other computer-related assignments, which proved to be invaluable going forward in my education. She knew the importance of technology and would not let her students leave her classroom without a firm grasp on its importance. She made a difference to me as well as countless other students. You knew she cared and went above and beyond to make sure her students were prepared to leave her classroom. I can say without a doubt that she was a crucial part in my education. Although I have only mentioned a few teachers, I can say that all the Christman teachers were pivotal in shaping my education. They have provided me with the educational foundation needed to help me succeed in college, as well as in business and in the world of politics. Their investment in my education has allowed me to be a successful learner in an ever-changing world. I am eternally grateful to all my teachers and the Utica Community Schools for the education and preparation I received to be a successful leader I am today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony Giannetti, for sharing your wonderful experience with us. Next, I would like to introduce our guest speaker, Mrs. Gina Stanlich. She is currently a Christman parent of Isabella in Grade 2, and she will be sharing with you her flashbacks from her former days at Christman, Mrs. Gina Stanlich.
I am honored to be speaking this evening as not only as a parent of a Christman 2nd grader, but also on behalf of my husband Joe and myself, who are both former Christman students and Utica Community School graduates. So in going with this evening's theme of "I Learn at Christman," I would like to start by saying that as a former Christman Cougar, I reflect. The last time I stood up and had people in this gym looking at me was my 6th grade graduation. I also fondly remember running around here in gym class with Mr. Shields, doing a presentation in Spanish with Mr. Potter as part of his Pepper's Club, lunches, Brownie talent shows, and spring carnivals. As I observed each grade's theme and the different ways they learn here at Christman, I realized that besides the further assistance of technology, not much has changed. I create, I read, I discover, and all the rest are all foundational skills I learned way back when and often use today in my career and my life. My husband and I had such a positive experience here that when preparation met luck and the opportunity to purchase a house in the subdivision we both grew up in presented itself, we jumped at it, knowing our kids would get a first-class education and a nurturing environment here. As a parent of a Christman Cougar, I advocate. They say it takes a village to raise a child, and as a working mom, I could not agree more. Time is managed, weeks are scheduled, to-do lists are made each day. Making sure that our involvement in our daughter's education is a priority and not an afterthought is at the top of the list. It is true that one of the most important members of our village is our daughter's educators, but we know they can't and shouldn't do it alone, so we do our best to partner with her teachers to ensure the most rewarding and beneficial experience for her. As a member of the Christman and Utica Community Schools family and a member of Shelby Township community, I associate. We have an amazing PTA here, and I am proud to be a part of it. It is a pleasure and a joy to support what they do to promote our school community and our kids. Living in community with the families at our school is another way to keep our kids safe, happy, and nurtured. I also associate and volunteer for the McCombe Charitable Foundation. This helps out people in our community and in our schools that are less fortunate and going through hard times. This is a wonderful support system for Utica Community Schools, and I hope they take advantage of it. And lastly and most genuinely, I appreciate. I appreciate Christman's past. The education, the values, and the memories made had cultivated a culture that echoes through the halls today. It's simply neat that my husband and I get to return as parents and do it all over again. I appreciate Christman's present. The teaching and administrative staff here has impressed us since day one. As overprotective, nervous kindergarten parents, to the more seasoned 2nd grade parents we are now, we appreciate the other parents who go above and beyond to volunteer and be an integral part of our kids' lives. I can honestly say that 33 years later, my husband and I are still making new friends at Christman. And lastly, I appreciate Christman's future. I appreciate the need to keep this positive culture and momentum going, especially since we have a 21-month-old future Christman Cougar, which will make my husband and I Christman parents until 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gina Stanlich, for sharing your heartfelt experiences with us. We are going to conclude our portion of the evening with a 4th grade singing performance as we celebrate citizenship in honor of our veterans.
In recognition of the upcoming Veterans Day holiday, we will be recognizing our veterans in the audience tonight with a medley of Armed Forces marches. We ask that all veterans please stand when you hear the theme to your branch being sung. Or if you'd like to honor a family member who has served or is currently serving, you may also stand when you hear that that song is sung. If you're currently standing, you might want to wave so we can recognize you. Thank you for your service to our country.
The halls of Montezuma to the shores of Tripoli. We fight our country's battles that the airmen live in sea. Works to fight the right and freedom and to keep our mother's lean. We are proud to claim the title of United States Marine.
Thank you, fourth graders. What a wonderful and caring way to honor our veterans tonight. I would like to thank all of the Crisman students who made this evening possible. Everyone did a fantastic job. A big thank you goes to the Crisman staff who spent many extra hours. I love my staff. They're so wonderful here. That's all I can say. And to our Crisman parents, thank you for allowing us to work with your students each day. We have hard-working students at Crisman who come from families committed to education. A special thank you goes out to our PTA for donating the wonderful refreshments this evening. And finally, I would like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Johns for providing Crisman the opportunity to showcase the learning that occurs at Crisman. We have enjoyed the evening, and we hope you have too.